Alright, show you the stand for the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's on the table? Send.
Your.
Here's one here. All order at seven P. The city of Grant advised by the Nebraska Open Meeting Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act is on display in this meeting room as required by the Nebraska state law. So on the south wall. The mayor and the city council reserve the right to enter into closed session at any time during the meeting in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meeting Act, even though the closed session may not be indicated on the agenda. It is the intention of the mayor and council to take up items on the agenda in order they are presented above. However, the mayor and the council reserve the right to take up matters in a different order to accommodate the schedule of the city council members. Persons having agenda items in the public. The city of Grant further reserved the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment may be limited to three minutes per person with a limit of two individuals speaking for topic position. Please come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record and the agenda item you wish to speak. Do everyone have a chance to review the agenda?
No, because that's that's only. Point four.
Cherry move, Kimberly second that we accept the agenda for the September twenty-four twenty twenty-four meeting discussion. Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Review and action of prior meeting minutes from September tenth, twenty twenty-four.
We've set action on prior meeting at September tenth, twenty twenty-four, with the reading.
Certainly.
Cherry move, Sam second that we accept the prior meeting minutes from September tenth, twenty twenty-four, and waive the reading. Any discussion? Kimberly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Review and action of the prior public hearing minutes from September eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
I'm going to say action on prior meeting minutes, September, October, and we're in the green.
Yeah. Sam move, Cherry second that we accept the prior meeting public hearing meeting minutes from September eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and waive the reading. Any discussion? Cherry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Communications, Edward.
Okay. Uh, we'll start with upcoming meetings really quick here. The nothing scheduled at this time. We don't anticipate a meeting at this time, but something may come between now and our next city council meeting. On the eighth, uh, cemetery will be on Tuesday, October eighth uh, at five fifteen P M. Uh, in this room. Uh, go over a quick couple of things here. Uh, we had an opportunity uh, to meet with, uh, Mark, Commissioner Bonham from the county, and Nicole Jaden from the Parks and Rec Board, and Janet Turner. Amazing citizen.
Yes.
Along with thirteen, along with, uh, the mayor, and we had some really good discussion and made a lot of progress in, in, uh, our path forward with the restaurants at the, uh, Volfields. As we discussed prior, we talked about the concerns of investing in property that isn't ours and, and, uh, the county came to the table ready. Mark was able to express his, uh, at least his opinion, uh, that they, they, okay, well, if you come to the table with some money to help us with the projects, that's as well as pushing along the interlocal agreement that we need to, uh, rectify. And, and putting language in there that would give the city some assurance that county would be on board for funding for future projects. So I, I think that went a long way. Mistake anything there? And, uh, Janet, Janet came ready with, uh, some options for portable toilet. Trailer, I think is what, what it was, something other than, uh, the porta potties. So we're excited to explore that. I know your world's been turned up.
Okay, yeah, I can.
Don't expect anything there, but, but, uh, um, but was very appreciative of all parties involved and came away from that meeting, um, with a renewed sense of, we're going to get something done down there besides just porta potties and fresh paint, so. And then I had an opportunity to ex- to attend the economic development conference in Carney called Thriving Communities um, on the seventeenth, and a large part of the, the morning was focused on childcare and, uh, affects not having childcare facilities or early childhood programs in your community as it relates to economic development. Um, a lot of what they're seeing now in the data is families don't want to move to an area that don't have, it does not have childcare or the capacity for.
Sure.
You know, so there, there's some work to be done there, and they're working at, say, at congressional level there. Um, and then the afternoon was focused a lot on, on telling your, your story, and this was called, this was like put on by NACO, Nebraska Association of County Teachers. Um, and so a lot of it was county focused, and then I, and I got put on the spotlight, um, by some people that were, that I knew there and said, hey, tell Grant's story. So, um, I had an opportunity to unprompted tell, tell Grant's story, so that was, that was exciting for me, um, good networking opportunity there. Um, and then on Friday, Mr. Forney, or sorry, Thursday, the nineteenth, Mr. Forney and I were able to attend the Western Tree City USA Celebration, and we did receive the award on behalf of the educators for the Nebraska Forest Service Community Service Work. We will be doing a presentation to the educators this Friday, twenty-seventh, at one thirty at the elementary, and those educators are Steve Snyder, Joe Richmond, Samantha Rivers, and Lindsay Cunnings. Uh, and they're all part of the fourth grade curriculum at the elementary and have been for quite some time, and they were chosen by Mr. Forney who did all of the late work on this application for the award. Um, and, and this is largely due in part to him getting this across the finish line, so. Uh, and then unfortunately, the second day of that was, was cut short for him as well. Um, they had a tour of the, we were in Fort Robertson, sorry, and, um, Rock near Crawford, beautiful. Just gorgeous. If you haven't been up there, highly recommend it. Um, they have some amazing history up there with their museum and soldier barracks and all of that. It's, it's truly impressive. Uh, so the couple more meetings upcoming, one after, after the our next meeting, I'm going to meet, uh, with, uh, in Imperial with Tyler Pruvino and talk about what they're doing in economic development. There's not a whole lot of economic development, uh, conferences in the area, or at least that I have seen, so I, they're doing some interesting things over there. He got, Max's job before he became the city administrator, was economic development director for him. Um, and then this Thursday, I'll meet with Amy Thielander, uh, and, uh, representative from Nebraska Department of Economic Development Housing Division um, at two forty-five Lincoln. Amy was awarded the grant. Um, so we will be moving forward with another infill lot project at two forty-five Lincoln Avenue. Um, I contacted our demolition guy to get the house torn down and, and the lot cleared. Bill has, uh, stayed the setbacks for us. So, uh, we're ready to move forward, and Amy, they, we gave Amy a shortened timeframe. So instead of the normal two years, she's got about eighteen months to get this out.
Jeez.
Uh, I know. Uh, now that doesn't include the sale. But, but construction wise, let me move in rather quickly on that or as quickly as she can on that. Our good news there, so that's, uh, that's what I have in form of communication.
Alright, thank you very much. Standing committee report. Kimberly, no, none, strange, blue, Sam?
No.
We just have a tree board. I'm going to table that, let Andrew, because I know she was at home for us, so. Okay, I have a discussion.
She wasn't at tree board, I was just.
On library, sorry, we'll, we'll have that discussion.
Okay. Alright, I'm sharing with you. Was in our pocket, I'd want to get a chance to review that. Please note. Suppose we appreciate my heart, there. Financials, Jesse?
Um, I did make sure and get everything figured out, showing still like, uh, final month. Um, this one did have that art fund funding, which you'll see in the following hours when we talk about. And I made sure and of course came into the federal airport account, so I made sure it turns over at the end of the month, so. Um, so you were the, uh, like kind of one that you do on Excel and the back, sort of, on there, because it's not a story in your reports. I think that was the big thing that really. Right?
In short, short turnaround, because the auditors will be here on the eleventh of October. Right? Tenth of October, sorry, we should earlier than every year. So. Let's try and get the September rapids and everything, whatever.
Alright, um, please note when you accept as presented. A public comment today. Alright, moving on to unfinished business. Action and discussion on ordinance number twenty-four oh eight oh four. Lucy, would you read that, please?
This is third reading, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero eight dash zero four. We want to explore compensation of all officers and employees of the city of Grant for the fiscal year of October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, where all other conflicting ordinances and conflicting sections of ordinances providing for that for break dates.
Sam, I do this. Great, thanks, Jesse. That worked, I said.
Now, you did, you did a lot of work this time, and I, I truly appreciate the back and forth that we had with everyone. It's outstanding, but, uh, and, uh, you put in a lot of legwork, you know, doing the data sheet and all that, and helping me find my way to that, to that number, so appreciate.
Oh, you too.
Not, not everyone, I appreciate everyone's input on that. Sam, Sam, I just have a little more back.
Yeah. Really hard.
Maybe I'll stop.
Everyone's figured it. Uh, I move to accept action and approve ordinance number twenty-four oh eight oh four, competition officer employee of the city of Grant. It's been about two oh one, twenty.
So you turn, and Amy, Kimberly, sorry, my ears are blocked and I cannot ask any of those.
I'm sorry, it's, it's.
No.
And, uh, you say oh eight, that says oh nine.
That was a clerical error.
It should be corrected.
So we're correcting it in the city or in the.
They are ringing.
They're ringing, that's correct now. In the back, it says, okay, workers. Actually, we're the same, we said that.
It's hard to church reading.
We started, please, dude, okay, sorry. We did start, honest.
That's what happens, we'll just see as a day. Alright, so we do have a motion on the table. Sam move, Kimberly second that we accept ordinance twenty oh eight oh nine and ordinance for the, or I'm sorry, twenty-four oh eight oh four. An ordinance for the compensation of all officers and employees of the city of Grant for fiscal year uh, of October one, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion? Do we have anything? Alright, Kimberly, how do you vote?
Cherry?
Yes. Sam?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Alright, new business.
On this first one, Eric had notified me, uh, that he would not be able to make it this evening, uh, Friday of last week, so hope the period didn't really snow, but this, the sixteenth was his anniversary. Um, we'll schedule a date for him to be here so we can present him the certificate. At this time, so.
Alright, so we'll just move to the next one. Action and discussion on rear appointment to the library board, Kimberly, I did meet with her and talked to her at length about the duties related to the center of the governing board, and she graciously said she would volunteer, so I'm sorry, moving to spark you. It's very tricky.
Is it library?
Yes.
What's that?
Is her here? Can we ask her any support of this?
Here.
Well, then I'm going to accept action, rear appointment, collection, remember, it's me.
We're going to add in, determining December of twenty twenty-four.
Are you determining December twenty twenty-seven?
Even though it's on the sheet, it doesn't hurt to state it out loud. I wanted to ask.
I wanted Jessica to know what's.
Sam moved, and do I hear, I say, and Cherry, you seconding? The mayor of the county to the library board would determine the December of twenty twenty-seven. And so, any discussion? Kimberly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cherry? Sam?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Alright, very good. Actually, a discussion on Revolution twenty-four oh nine oh two, one that reintroduce yourself, of course. We actually was involved in development history. And I'm here for this program. Alright. So this first resolution, it were rescinding prior resolution, twenty-six oh four. There is a lot of reasons there.
Everybody in there?
We'll move to set action on resolution number twenty-four oh nine oh two to rescind the prior resolution twenty-four oh six oh four on property west first street. Second.
Cherry move, Kimberly second that we move forward with resolution number twenty-four oh nine oh two, rescinding prior resolution number twenty-four oh six oh four, and that is the property of West First Street. Any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
And actually, correct me, that, other than the abatements, that's the last, uh, property?
Yeah, there's two remaining. What is left to evade?
I mean, other than the abatements, that's the last one. Um, and at this time, I'd like to, uh, as it pertains to the nuisance program and within this agenda item, um, I actually would like to discuss the path coming forward with the, uh, with the abatements themselves scheduling, so. So just need some guidance from you, no action necessary here, just, uh, just some guidance on how you want to proceed and when you want to proceed with the abatement of those two properties that have already been moved.
You guys are on board with us, giving forward a schedule.
Yeah, the same timeframe that we've kept in the past.
Yep.
Same standards, yes. Thank you so much for the complex conversation.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Sam, Sam. You're right.
Once again, they showed that those two living properties are done, um, and asked to also in the hourly report. So we can see the file numbers, properties, success, or, uh, successful, selected presented forward as we're still looking at some statistical, uh, name. Cheers, so.
Great, thank you. Action and discussion on resolution twenty-four oh nine oh three, the resolution for the property tax request.
I guess before you move forward on this, I just want to commend the council and the mayor, um, on, on another year. We kept the property tax increase, or the property taxes, three points. Property taxes where, where they were, and we were able to reduce the levy once again. I know that was, was difficult, but we tried to do the best we could within the budget to make that happen. Um, largely a part due to some self-tax revenue, meaning relieving some of that bond, um, pool, so. We are once again reducing, you know, the money from the general population bond.
You also went out, let me reduce the tax levy to lower than it has been then.
Yep.
It's pretty good.
Good.
Not many.
That sounds funny.
Well, well, a very challenging, with, with. Please take still the property.
I move accept resolution number twenty-four oh nine oh three, a resolution setting the property capture.
We have to stay.
Just the amount?
Yes.
So, I don't know. There are a bunch of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, a debt service fund of ten thousand, and the levy of zero point three eight zero one nine four, or a hundred dollars for assessed value.
They still sent me.
Sam move, Kimberly second that we accept resolution twenty-four oh nine oh three, the resolution setting the property tax request with a general fund of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, debt service fund of ten thousand, and tax levy of zero point three eight zero one nine four four five one hundred of assessed value. Any discussion?
We also decreased our operating budget by ten percent, almost, so that's huge.
Right. Okay, ten percent difference. No discussion? Kimberly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Thank you. Action, let's go to my Revolution twenty-four oh nine oh four, a resolution proving a one percent increase above the base limitation and restricted funds.
This is every year for the.
Yes.
Speak up, Ed, so we can hear you. Say, so can you speak up so we can hear you? Oh, I'm sorry, I, I will, yes, thank you. Uh, this is the, the normal accounting to the budget, uh, for the one percent, uh, above the late base limitation, and I'm, Jesse, you want to elaborate on that, or?
Make sure to get in touch, maybe a bit again.
At the budget carrying. Yep, just run over that, at the budget carrying, yep.
I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four oh nine oh four, a resolution proving the one percent increase of base limitation and restriction.
Yes. Alright. Kimberly move, Cherry second that we accept resolution twenty-four oh nine oh four, a resolution approving a one percent increase above the base limitation and restrictions. Any discussion? Sam?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Alright, action and discussion on resolution twenty-four oh nine oh five, a resolution approving the annual appropriation bill. Again, I think this is what we discussed at the budget carrying.
In your packet, you will find a budget form and an accounting compilation report, as well as the budget worksheets, which are the annual appropriation bill.
Well, none of our, our studies required.
Yes, they have not been changed since our public part of the view.
And then changes that were made during the public carrying will be advertised, which is what we.
Well, it's an action on resolution number twenty-four oh nine oh five, proving the annual motion. I can, Cherry move, Kimberly second that we accept the resolution twenty-four oh nine oh five, a resolution improving annual preparation. Any discussion? Alright, Cherry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Action and discussion on the interlocal agreement for installation and operation of automated plate readers between the city of Grant and Perkins County.
The sheriff had reached out to me last Tuesday while I was in economic development, offensive player. Received some monies to put up some licensed plate readers on the highway. City ride, city ride away on our utility poles, that's why interlocal was necessary. The locations are provided in the document, um, there was a picture of the, uh, readers, what they look like. I figured, I'm sure it was this. And I've also included the cover right at the reset for the push.
Cherry, what's in?
Yeah.
We're not, both, and so there are many ones of, well, we're, we're, you know, that much are things are more than all they're not, but these aren't office, the ones throughout them. Down, down parts, some of them.
They're never speeding, this is more like pushing for crimes, that's what I'm entertaining, right? It's like, you know, people pay absolutely, and it's still a car and things. Yeah. Exactly where they're being put through, yeah.
Uh, Amber, there's a lot of times have a license plate.
Yeah, I've seen that, yeah. So. Well, that's good, I don't want people thinking.
Yes.
Drive off the interstate.
Silver.
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 Yep.
Well, somebody think they can drive the interstate, drive through a town and get away, get out, somebody on. Sir, I'm talking, I think, thanks.
Alright, great. And we'll make a motion to, uh, to the interlocal agreement for installation and operation of automated plate readers between the city of Nebraska and Perkins County.
They have, you know, take it down.
I don't know. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, but Luke, Sam, seconds to approve the agreement for installation and operation of automated plate readers between the city of Grant and Perkins County, allowing the mayor to sign, any more discussions? Cherry, how do you vote?
Kimberly?
Yes. Sam? Motion, Carrie. Alright, action and discussion on the solid waste disposal agreement, and this also looked fairly.
You have a agreement, hey, have Jbar J Langfield to pick our refuse. Little Langfield, so, um, Jesse talked about, uh, that was thirty-three. Oh, friends. Uh, seemed like everything came in, well, it was not in, so, um, and then, uh, this important, the meat of it here is the, um, the changes over the five years, um, the, the rates over the five years, A, B, C, and D in section seven, A. That, just to take note of there, nothing out of lines. I did check with the county and see what rates they were getting as well, so.
Um, the previous ones, I had sent to Tana since I had started in O H, and they were at two percent, and they probably get increases.
Which, and I'm surprised it's still only that now, I mean, I think that's really reasonable.
When you cross the field, yeah, well, there is a field surcharge in the few years over. Yes, increase, but.
Right. Right.
And this would be good for another five years, and then I, we're needing authorization for the mayor to sign it, please.
And I will accept action on solid waste disposal agreement between the city of Grant and Jbar J Langfield LLC, and allow the mayor to sign this. So, Cherry move, we have a request that we approve the solid waste disposal agreement between the city of Grant and Jbar J Langfield LLC, allowing the mayor to sign, any discussion? Sam?
Yes.
Yes, Cherry? Motion, Carrie. Did everyone get a chance to review the building plans?
Yes.
And we see a lot of, and we want to probably similarly, with your.
We'll just, lots of thank you, another moment, should say thank you for your patience, this is our new this one year, and we want to make sure and Jesse, you're risking a lot of, like, lock or something this afternoon, just to double check that we didn't need to do it again, so.
To close up.
Yeah. We're buying all the practice to leave it here, I mean.
On this action on bills and claims in an amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and one hundred and one dollars of rate loss.
On this action on bills and claims in an amount of one hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred and one hundred and one dollars and forty five cents.
Turn your moves, Sam, second that we accept building claims in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and points by cents, any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Kimberly, yes. Yes, yeah. Guy asked. We are adjourned at seven thirty.
I think I have a lobby, I'm just normal.